Order and determination of a quorum for the Linmar Community School District Board of Directors meeting, January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five.
Director Buckholz?
Here.
Director Foss?
Here.
Director Mansour?
Here.
Director Maury?
Here.
Director Thomas?
Here.
Director Walker?
Here.
President Lao Lancaster?
Here. Before we have our adoption of agenda, just a couple housekeeping conversations. We are now in our new digs for the second or third meeting and just letting you know, our microphones are very sensitive, but also you need to turn them off and on when you speak, have them in a position so that we can hear clearly. With that, now that we have our own system and our own microphones and technology, what I'm going to do tonight is I'll say item number two hundred, adoption of agenda, and I'm going to pause and then the board will fill in the motions and then I will say, is there a second, and then go to discussion. Just make sure that we're all heard and that we are just moving these motions along. Also want to give a pause at the end. We will pause before we go to a vote, just to make sure there's no other further discussion that someone needs to or would like to encourage or be a part of. I do ask that when you speak, that just make sure we are making eye contact. It's a little harder up here, but make sure that we're not stepping over each other in our conversations. Also, I want to thank you for your dedication, your professionalism, and what you're willing to do for this district as a volunteer and an elected official. So, thank you to my colleagues. And tomorrow, we will be in Des Moines with our legislative leaders and we will be there to talk once again about our joy and our passion for public schools. So with that, I ask for item number two hundred, the adoption of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a second by Barry and second by Britt. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, may I have all in favor please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number three hundred, this is our public hearing. A public hearing is being held to have, to talk about the plans and specifications on the Excelsior Middle School Roof Replacement Project. This is item number exhibit, or excuse me, exhibit number eight oh one point one. At this time, I don't believe we have any, anyone who has signed up to this. Therefore, this discussion has been in public hearing is now closed. At this time, we move on to item number four hundred, audience communications. And again, there is a, with policy number two oh four, we welcome your communications with the board. At this time, there is no one who has signed up to speak, therefore this item will, we will move forward. Item number five hundred, mission moment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the things that are happening within the district and things that you observed?
Yeah, um, make sure I got this right. All right. I was so impressed. I went to Supernova last weekend for the first time and I volunteered in years past, but I've never actually gotten to attend Supernova. And I went this year and the amount of work our volunteers in our community puts together to make that event, it's the biggest fundraiser for the Coral Department and it's just, it's really, really impressive to see the community come together and, you know, our staff are there, the students are there. Our students don't compete, we're hosting, and so our students are running around being very helpful before they perform and then just hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours go in. So I just wanted to say that it was wonderful to see all of that come together so well and to see our kids on showcase. So, thank you to everyone who had any part in making that event the success that it was.
Thank you. Is there any other comments that someone would like to make? Go ahead.
Just, you know, we've got a lot of really good academic students here as well, but lately, we've been crushing it in the athletic world and I know that our basketball teams have played some really amazing games and our wrestling teams, both boys and girls, are killing it and I know, I even got to go, and our swimming teams just took a second in conference. So, we are, our students are participating in a lot of activities.
Can you turn your mic to you more particular?
Sorry.
Turn it directly towards your speaking. Is that better? We'll wait for him to speak.
I have never, ever been told I was not loud enough. This is interesting. Okay, so we've got a lot of kids who are involved in athletics all the way through high school, through middle school, and the intermediates as well, and we are, the kids are having a lot of success this year and they're working hard and they're putting it in, but it also showcases just how many kids we have that are doing intermurals and athletic activities. We have a lot in this school district and our kids are crushing it. So, great job to all the athletes, student athletes.
Thank you. Is there other comments?
I have a bit of an atypical mission moment to share. In the spirit of Team Marion and the values and the sense of community that we want to encourage in our students and in our families, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Marion Independent School District on the construction of their new Performing Arts Center. We can, we can celebrate our community's success along with our success and we're so excited for our own Performing Arts Center, but I know lots of us are friends and go to the Marion School District as well and kind of in that spirit, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate them and hope we can go to each other's performances in the next, in the next years. So, thank you so much.
I just want to congratulate a lot of seniors who are getting acceptance to colleges, a lot of seniors that have applied and got acceptance and just wanted to throw it out there. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's been a very vibrant January, even though it's been cold, and we thank you for the decisions that had to be made also for the safety of our students, especially with the cold temperatures. If that's all the mission moments we have, I'm going to go ahead and move us on to item six oh one, volunteer program report. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Angela Burke. I am the Community Relations Coordinator here for Linmar Community Schools, mostly in charge of volunteer efforts here in the district. So, I'm excited that you gave me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what's going on in the volunteer world at Linmar. Before I give you an update, I can't talk about the volunteer world without saying thank you to the people up on this screen. So, beyond me is a wonderful slew of volunteer coordinators that help at all of our building levels. So, these amazing people on their screen give a lot of time and energy and effort to help coordinate the efforts at each of our buildings. So, thank you to all of them for their service. Many times, they're coordinating efforts behind the scenes. Lots of them have full-time jobs, part-time jobs as well, and they do this just out of the kindness of their hearts. So, lots of times you'll also find them volunteering within the buildings too. So, a huge thank you to them for all they do to support the program as well. In terms of volunteer stats, I always like to look at a whole volunteer year as a whole. So, I'm going to go back to last year for just a minute and give you some stats in regards to last year. So, overall, last year, we had one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven approved volunteers in the district. So, a lot of people that want to do a lot of good in our schools and that's amazing. Of those that remembered to log their time, we had twenty thousand one hundred and fifty-five hours of logged time last year given to the district in volunteer hours. On that chart there, you're going to see that the majority of those hours, the largest number there is given in direct interaction with our students. So, our volunteers are in our classrooms, they're reading to kids, they're doing those literacy centers, they are working to directly make an impact in our students' learning. So, a huge shout out just to the time that they're spending working with our kiddos. PTO programs, materials and workshop are high up there too. In the spirit of community engagement, our PTOs do a wonderful job at building that community within each of our schools, so really seeing those efforts and people go above and beyond in making some of those activities and events really inspirational, which each of the buildings is amazing. I threw another number on there, the volunteer value. If you look into the independent sector and you talk about in the nonprofit world, you're going to see a number that's typically identified and given to the value of volunteerism within the, each year. So, in two thousand twenty-three, in the state of Iowa, they estimated that to be a twenty-eight dollar per hour rate. So, in terms of volunteer value, you're looking at about five hundred, over five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars worth of value given to our district. So, that's pretty amazing right there to see. In terms of where we're headed this year and where we've kind of seen things trend this year, I want to highlight that currently, right now, we are at nineteen, actually as of today, nineteen twenty-eight volunteers, approved volunteers within our district. So, we've even snuck up higher than last week. So, we have, we're seeing an increase in adult and high school student volunteers getting involved within our buildings. That's amazing. So, I have done orientations for over three hundred and seventy-five new volunteers this year, this school year. So, again, just seeing the amount of people that want to be involved and want to make a difference in our schools is truly phenomenal. So, watching that numbers sneak higher every year has been amazing. Watching our volunteers go where there is a need is also amazing. So, in the past couple of years, you know, I know we've adopted some new curriculum pieces, so with a new curriculum, lots of times comes new materials. So, having our volunteers cut out flashcards and do some of those things behind the scenes to make the learning in our classrooms happen is really awesome. This year, we're seeing an extra need in some of those other areas, so they've really stepped in with our lunchroom help and library assistance. So, we've seen one thousand six hundred and forty-four hours given within our lunchroom and our library so far this year, which has exceeded the time given in total last year. So, last year, we ended at about thirteen hundred hours recorded in those areas. So, again, seeing volunteers step in where sometimes there is that need is very impactful. And then just a shout out to something that warms my heart. We've just seen a number of retirees or past school employees that have given a huge amount of time to the district already. To, so to see those people come back to me and say, hey, before I leave or right after I leave, I need to make sure that I'm on your volunteer list. And I've seen them in the building. So, watching our past educators, our administrators, our student support staff, our past, coming back into our buildings and help in a lunchroom or help cut out something for a teacher or sharpen pencils, whatever the task is, watching them continue to come back and give back to our district, I think speaks huge to what we do. So, they've already given, they've impacted our district, but to see them continue to give back has really made a difference. So, I appreciate that. Just talking about some of the big efforts that are given in the volunteer world throughout the year, I know a lot of you were involved in the America Reads Day, so thank you for that. But America Reads Day is a fun event that we do each fall, typically happens around mid-October. This year, we had five hundred and forty-three total volunteer readers in our elementary and intermediate level buildings, filling over seven hundred and four reading spots in those buildings. So, it's a great day for community engagement in our schools. Getting those volunteers to come in, talk about the joy of reading, the excitement behind reading, how reading's been impactful to them, and share fun stories with our kids, for our kids to have a great day is a lot of fun. So, thank you for those of you that were able to participate that day as well. Encourage a Reader is another great program that is happening throughout the school year. We have done, Encourage a Reader for over thirty years in our district. We reach out to our teachers in the fall and say, hey, do you have kiddos that you think could benefit from being paired with an adult volunteer reader? Sometimes it's kiddos that need a little extra push in the area of reading. Sometimes it's those kiddos that have parents that work that night shift that don't have the opportunity to read with a parent before bedtime. Sometimes it's those kiddos that might just benefit from being, having some adult social interaction as well. So, we are pairing a hundred and twenty-five kiddos with a volunteer to read with them once a week for fifteen to twenty minutes. We see kiddos grow leaps and bounds in the Encourage a Reader program. We have volunteers that come back year after year to do this program and really connect with kiddos. Sometimes we even have volunteers who will connect with the same kiddo sometimes from year to year. So, it's really a great program that we love to see continue to impact kids in the district. Volunteer workshops, we have seven, over seventy volunteer workshops that we host across our intermediate and our elementary buildings each year. Volunteer workshops, it's just that, it's just material workshops. We ask volunteers to come out in droves and to sit and talk and chat about what's happening in our buildings while we're cutting out things or tracing things or sharpening the pencils or gluing number lines together, making new name tags for desks, whatever task it is that our teachers would normally take home and do in their evening time, we try to take that off their back for them. So, we try to help our staff. We always reach out to our teachers and staff the week of our volunteer workshops, remind them that it's coming up and say, how can we help you? No project is too small and we always say, no project is too big, but sometimes we regret that. But, we love doing it. I'm just going to speak to some of the numbers. Britt just mentioned it too. Supernova just happened recently. Some of you were there, some of you were volunteering, so thank you for those of you that came and helped with that event. Seven hundred and sixty-nine volunteer spots to make that event happen. That is phenomenal. So, to the, see the community of volunteers come together and execute an event like that is just, it's phenomenal. So, we had show choir parents there, we had previous show choir parents there, we had just a community of volunteers that knew that we needed the help, that have no kids in show choir or the choir department at all, who came to support that too. Teachers, educators, administrators carrying that stage as well. So, a huge shout out to all the volunteers that make big events like that happen. Some of the other things that are upcoming, some of the things that you'd think about that are awesome opportunities for our kiddos, but that you don't realize, hey, these need volunteers to make these things happen as well. Opera Iowa is coming up here in about a month or so in all of our elementary buildings. It's amazing program for our kiddos to be exposed to. But in order for Opera Iowa to help or to happen within the elementary buildings, we need volunteers to help set up their stage. So, we have about fifty-six volunteers that will need to help set up that set in all of our elementary buildings for our kiddos to see that. At the end of April, beginning of May, you're going to see BizTown, Junior Achievement BizTown come through again. We need a hundred and twenty-five volunteers over a number of days to help those activities happen too. In addition to that, there's, there's lots of other things too. I know we need fifty volunteers for our Solo Fest. We need a hundred, about a hundred and thirty-five volunteers just went out for our upcoming sewing unit at the middle schools. So, definitely lots of opportunities for involvement and lots of big numbers of volunteers needed to help make those things happen. Again, I'd like to just echo a huge thank you to you for volunteering your time as members of the board, but also in these events. So, I see lots of you at our sporting events. I saw many of you at Supernova. I see you signing up to help with the mock interviews and at America Reads Day. So, you're not only up here, but you're in our schools and you're volunteering your time. So, thank you to you and the time that you give to our schools in so many ways. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's very uplifting and it is encouraging, especially as we hear that it is very intergenerational experience to see everyone coming together as a community. I know on American Reads, sometimes it's some of the teams, some of the sports teams, musicians, all the way to some grandmas and grandpas. So, these are opportunities for everybody and I want to thank you very much. Going back to that photo that you showed, yeah, there's many ways to contact the individual in the buildings, not only with the need that you would like to fill, but in the building that you would feel most comfortable. So, thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Shut it down.
All right. At this time, we're going to go along with item number six oh two, our Finance and Audit Committee Report.
We had a very good Finance and Audit Committee meeting on January the twenty-second. We're just, we're, I'm just going to say we're very fortunate because having John Galbraith here, because usually, when you go through finance and go through an audit, and we just went through an audit, there were no deficiencies. On May, on February the tenth, the auditor will come back and give a presentation to the board as a whole. Couple of things just to point out in there that we have increased valuations, and of course, that always leads to increased values, that's in property values. We had a less than one percent increase in expenses and I think that's a real, real big deal because of what we just went through with budget cutting processes, et cetera, the unfortunate of staffing situations and stuff, so we worked through all of that. We talked about the IRS General Obligation Bond Review coming up. So, basically, documents have been presented and also the sale of same, save bonds, and that's the sales tax bonds, and those were for the performance venue. Roughly, the IRS is reviewing this now, which is very normal, so we'll be talking about that. It's going to be delayed about thirty days. Facility maintenance is always a big discussion for this committee. The stadium scoreboard, that's in process and probably what will happen through that, that we will have to relocate the scoreboard from where it's at today on the sports complex. It'll, it'll be relocated to another location and that's all due to cost of installing, cost of repair, et cetera. So, it'll actually lower the cost down to what we thought it was going to cost to replace the scoreboard. And basically, we're still waiting on the pricing for the installation. The board, it's, the scoreboard itself has been acquired, is in process, but we're waiting to hear back from somebody to install it. The ten-year plan, as we move forward, we talked through that a lot, that each principal in each facility has, has given their wish list. We're working through some of those items. And then any annual project wish lists. And I think that's a real, real key thing because the principal input is important, maintenance and upkeep is important, and the rainy day fund expenditures is important. So, once again, John has worked through that very well for us. We don't want to get ourselves in a predicament that, that some of our facilities are wearing down. We're very fortunate that we do have very good facilities and so just constant updates are important to move forward. Some other items, and this is a real big item in my opinion, and we'll be voting on this a little bit later on, the Student Support Associate Retention Bonus. We've, we've got openings in the Student Support Services, so we've made a decision that we're going to give a five hundred dollar bonus paid at the end of the year if the employee is employed, employed by March third and still here by the end of the year. So, it'll be paid out in the July paycheck. So, we're recommending that to come to the board for approval. An additional request for, for nutrition and transportation, transportation updates. So, our next meeting will be February sixth. Any questions or comments anybody have on that?
I just want to reemphasize what Barry said about our meeting with the auditor. Once again, we had an A-plus clean report, so no deficiencies, but is great. But being able to say that we have an A-plus audit means that we are being fiscally responsible, we are doing the right things with our, our funds. And our auditor is a third-party company. It's not an internal audit. It's an outside audit firm that comes in and they spend a lot of time with John and his team, going through our processes and the procedures, and it's a very thorough, detailed process. So, the fact that we continue to get these A-plus ratings, I just want to commend your department once again and all of your, your staff. It's not easy and it's important work. Thank you.
I was just going to add, agree with the audit. That's for all of our taxpayers in the community and all of our parents in the community. There's your, there's your proof that we are being fiscally responsible and following the processes that we have, and we have very good processes. Last thing, Barry is just going to add to your ten-year plan. You know, it's just a reminder, it's nothing new, it goes without saying, but for staff in the district, if there are things that you see in the buildings that need updating, that need repair, you need to communicate that to the principals so that they have the list. We know our principals are in these buildings day in and day out and they hear from staff, but if we have staff that are aware of something, we just need to continue to remind staff to make sure that's reported, make sure it's, it's falling through the chain, so we can make sure we've got a full, good scope of the, the things that need maintenance and improvement in our buildings.
Thank you for your report. We're going to move on tonight, item number six oh three, the Marion City Council Report. At that, at this time, Director Thomas, would you please report on January twenty-third?
Yeah, I have two items to share from that meeting. One is related to the land annexation that was mentioned at our previous board meeting. That had, that, an ordinance to rezone that land to SR two is the technical name for it, but it is a single-family home, eight thousand square feet lots, and it will be annexed by the Marion City Council. Just to give folks a context of what that neighborhood could look, you know, will look like and they emphasize the need for a lower intensity to fit with the surrounding area. So, an update on, on that land. Another item that I wanted to share is regards to trying to get funding for the completion of Tower Terrace. It's a minor thing really, but the city of Marion signed, wrote a letter of support in support of an application for a federal RACE grant to continue to try to get funding for the completion of that. I know I regularly do the jog from like the one chunk of Tower Terrace around and then the really bumpy like stop, after the stop sign to get like back here. And so, I know several of us, many, many of us, I should say, are looking forward to the completion of Tower Terrace and I thought I'd share that because it's relevant and thank you.
Thank you for your report. We move on to item number six oh four, our Legislative Report. Directors Foss and Thomas.
Yep, I get that, that one again. So, so like Director Lao Lancaster mentioned earlier, tomorrow, we-
we will be at the Day on the Hill for IASB and the AEA's, and there's one other entity, SAI. Thank you. And so I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, again, share that, that we'll be there. And I also wanted to give kind of a refresher on the legislators representing the Lindmar District by geography. Because while we might associate a couple legislators who have the bulk of the Lindmar District, there's actually more legislators than you think that represent our entire district. And it's important to me that we look at that bigger picture, right? Again, you know, we are also in Cedar Rapids. We, you know, we are also in rural areas. So just a quick recap. So we are represented by Iowa State Senators Molly Donahue in District 37, Liz Bennett in Senate District 39, and Art Staid in District 40. And then our representatives in House District 73, Elizabeth Wilson; in House District 74, Eric Jerdy; in District 78, and I'm sorry, I should have been using their titles. I apologize, Representative Sammy Sheets; and last, House District 83, Cindy Golding. Representative Cindy Golding, dang it. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Director Foss. Oh, also, sorry, I printed it off and it went to the second page. I'm very real. I apologize. Senator Charlie McClintock in Senate District 42, and Representative Amy Wickendall in Iowa House District 80. So, just so we all are familiar with them. The second thing I wanted to bring up is that as of right now, the governor's proposed a 2% SSA. That is the key number that we watch when we look at the funding. So last year, it was 2.5%. Currently, 2% is proposed. The deadline for the legislature to finalize that is February 13th. Last year, we didn't, they did not finalize it till May? May? So, and to give context, until they finalize that, we're, it's a big question mark. We plan conservatively and hope that we are within, you know, what they expect. But until the legislature finalizes that SSA, it's up in the air. And so that deadline is in 17 days, February 13th. And if I could ask folks, next time they talk, ask them, encourage them to please finalize SSA by February 13th. And it'd be nice if it was in accordance with inflation, but that's not really the point. Did you have a thing to add?
I'll just add that tomorrow, when we go to the Hill, we'll be advocating for a 3% SSA or above. 2% is, when they ask us what the impact of 2% will be, is very, very, very difficult to continue to offer the amazing programming that we do and the staff that we do with a 2% SSA. So for those of you who are interested in also letting your legislators know, you can let them know that when we go to the Hill, we'll be telling them that 2% is not feasibly responsible and that we really need 3% is really what we're looking for.
Thanks, Justin. Thanks, Director Foss. And then a couple bills. It's very early, so it's really hard to say what's going to go through with the different funnel deadlines and everything, but there are some bills that have made their way through subcommittee, and so I'm just going to briefly cover those by topic category. The first being bills affecting curriculum. So House Study Bill 30 is the bill that requires high school seniors to pass the naturalization test to graduate. Senate Study Bill 1028 affects the curriculum for human growth and development. And I'm covering these very briefly, just to give folks awareness, not to get too deep into the details. Active bills affecting student health and nutrition, House File 34, which is information regarding immunization exemptions. House Study Bill 10 would allow athletic trainers to provide health services in school. This would be in lieu of a school nurse. House Study Bill 5 would prohibit schools from serving food with certain ingredients in them at school, in school mealtimes. And then active bills affecting extracurricular activities. Senate Study Bill 1023 is the one relating to students attending online schools, and House File 1 involves students attending non-public schools, and both of those allow for those students to participate in public schools' extracurricular activities without restriction, like it makes it easier for them to access those.
It requires the public school to accept them.
Yes.
So.
So, thank you for the time.
I appreciate it very much, and I look forward to meeting our representatives. If you would be so kind as to provide that list for us, I think that that'd be just informative. It was wonderful, Justin and I had the opportunity to be the welcoming team, part of with staff, with Amy and John, to be the welcoming team here. I look forward for them to welcome us in their place of work as well, and then see how we can continue to be partners. So providing that list for us continually, I think would be most helpful.
Yes, I can absolutely have that list. There are, I should add, there's dozens of other bills in the Education Committee right now, and some that actually aren't in the Education Committee, but still would affect public schools. And I'm not trying to ignore those because they have some very critical pieces, but the ones that are moving and active are the ones that I just wanted to highlight here at the table.
I think what I was including is, can you give us also a list of our representatives and who is in our community moving these bills forward? That'd be lovely.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Can I ask a question? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The proposed changes to the science curriculum standards. It's my understanding that's not a bill currently. It's just a proposal. Were schools asked to participate in that recommendation?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to ask the question. And then, that's something I would love for, if you guys could keep track of that. Just what, if, what progress, if it actually, I don't know, I can't find anything that says if it has to turn into a bill or if the DOE just gets to do it. So I'd love to learn that. And we can ask questions tomorrow, too. And then, I guess, not a question so much, is I attended the ISB webinar last week and the context, I appreciate you guys talking about the 2% SSA and that we're going to ask for 3. They've said during that webinar that at a 2% SSA, more than half of the school districts in Iowa would be put on budget guarantee, which means they will be receiving less funding than they did a year ago. So I just think putting context to 2% versus 3%, at 2%, more than half of our school districts will have less money than they did a year ago in their budget. So thank you for summarizing all of that.
I have a question as well. I'm wondering if, with all the discussions about government restrictions around DEI work and some things that I'm hearing around the governor's recommendations to remove certain categories from the Iowa Civil Rights Act, things like that, do you, have you heard anything yet about what that is anticipated to look like, if there's anything that looks like it's moving, and/or what the anticipated implications are for public schools at the K-12 level? Because I know, I'm hearing a lot about the college level and what the implications are, but I haven't heard as much about the K-12 and what that means for us in terms of things like our DEI committee and student supports and just the broader picture of, like, everything that we do for supporting individuals with disabilities and transgender supports. And if that's no longer a protected class, then what does that mean for us? And how do we, how do we ensure protections when, yeah, so I have a lot of concerns and fears and just curious what you're hearing, if anything, yet.
So I'm going to start by making a distinction between two elements of your question. One is the executive order by President Trump to remove DEIA from federal programs. And I know it's more than just federal programs, so if everyone could grant me the grace of understanding, this is a generalized statement. Thank you. And then, I believe the other potential legislation that you're referencing is the potential to remove gender identity as a protective class in Iowa. So I wanted to make a distinction between those two. At this point in time, I am not aware of the potential impacts from the executive order as it could come down to us at the district level. So I'm going to put that one kind of on the back burner for now. Not that it's not important, just that I don't have anything concrete to say, to speak to at this time. The other one has been publicized as potentially coming. I have not seen anything filed or anything official out of the State House about that. Like with all of our legislation and, you know, curriculum standards that could affect us. And if there were to be a bill related to that, that would impact our students and staff and community, we will track that with all the other bills we track and bring updates with everything else.
There you go.
Amy and/or any other, have you heard anything more about the implications of the federal executive order on K-12 schools?
No, we just know that we've got attorneys out there following this closely for us, and we'll be making recommendations to school districts.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a bill for the civil rights thing.
Thank you. I think that that is a very exciting, interesting conversation that has yet to come to fruition, but I think tomorrow we can also have opportunities, one-on-ones. And so I look forward to the well-attended, that we'll have so many board members there tomorrow to be able to have those conversations, especially to speak to your heart on things that are of importance to you. So thank you very much for this conversation. I'm going to go ahead, if that's all right. We're going to move this forward to 605, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Lau Lancaster. I want to say thank you to Angela Burke for the wonderful presentation tonight on our volunteer program. It's just amazing to know that we have more than 1,922 volunteers. And I think about that number, and I think about roughly 7,500 students. That's, you know, such a great ratio. So thank you for the presentation tonight, and thank you so much for all of those of you that volunteer. And I think it's super heartwarming, and like Angela said, just says so much about our staff that they're willing to come back and continue to give their time in a different way after they retire. So thank you to all of our staff members as well. Just a shout out to our orchestra. Congratulations to 39 Lindmar Orchestra students for being selected to perform in the 2025 Northeast Iowa Strings Teacher Association Orchestra Festival that was held on January 11th. Several of you have mentioned tonight our show choir event, Supernova. So congrats to the students, directors, and volunteers on a great performance on January 18th. I want to highlight an event that we're having this week that we are calling or billing our event as Roar Like a Lion, and this is being promoted so that we have families come in for pre-registration events in our elementary buildings. So on Thursday, January 30th, these events will target families who might be interested in rolling a child into preschool, junior kindergarten, or kindergarten classes for next year. We're sharing this event through our building newsletters, our website, and through some advertisement in Facebook and Instagram. So we're looking forward to having our families in our buildings this week. Speaking of preschool, we have recently sought out some information from our parent group to see if there would be interest, if we could try to stand up some preschool wrap care. And I know preschool's been in the news a lot lately with what the governor has also proposed. We too understand that usually a barrier that we hear from our preschool families to not attending our programs is usually one of two things. One, transportation is hard for them, given the time of day that our preschool programs are held. Or two, it's just the wrap care, the daycare isn't available before or, you know, on either side of that. So we are going to be moving forward with issuing an RFP to seek out a vendor that would supply that in one of our buildings. We heard from enough parents that they were interested, that we'll try to stand that program up next year. So stay tuned. We look forward to bringing you more information on that. Just some recent meeting participation. We have participated in and made a selection for Indian Creek Principal that you'll see later on the personnel agenda coming up. Met recently with our Lindmar Foundation Director, Shelley Schrader, presented at the Marion Leadership and Action Monthly Meeting. John and I attended a budget workshop at Grantwood AEA. We've had the Board Finance and Audit Committee meeting. I presented last week at the School Administrators of Iowa New Superintendent's Meeting. It was fun to get to be part of that group. Virtually attended a meeting with UEN, and then Friday evening was delighted to attend the Java and Jazz Event put on by our high school jazz bands. Just a quick update about our facilities, ongoing projects that are happening there, our performance venue. The restroom punch list was completed on January 22nd, and the city of Marion has granted us occupancy, so it's always nice to have more restrooms at the high school. Structural steel installation for the balcony level is beginning. Deckwork installation is ongoing in a different area through the end of January. And then we're switching over to new electrical gear during spring break. And as far as our high school indoor activities center, the design team has met with a steering committee to review schematic design, packaging, and costs. And the next steps are creating a phasing schedule with potential financial resources to understand what the timing of all that project could look like, and then eventually a report to the board on that. And then our events that I have to foreshadow are just February events. Can't believe we're talking about February already with high school conferences coming up on February 6th. We've got some two-hour early dismissals happening later in the month so that we can round out with our K-8 conferences, and we end the month then with our Professional Development Day. With that, I take any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions directly for our superintendent? If not, thank you very much for your hard work, especially those days when you have to make tough decisions about whether or not school is open, delayed. They touch the hearts of every family that has to make a little bit of adaption or pivot a little bit. So thank you for the safety of our students. We're now going to move on to item number 700, our Unfinished Business. Item number 701, Second Reading of the Policy Recommendations.
Motion to approve the second reading of policy recommendations as presented in Exhibit 701.1.
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion on the approval of the second reading of the policy recommendations?
Last time, we had a discussion about whether or not we were going to call it a district or a school district and consistency. Did we get some feedback on that?
Thank you for that question. That was the question that came up, I believe. Justin brought that to our attention, that there were some inconsistencies within the document. Did not change the intent of the document, but it did read inconsistently. So then, we would like to, because that conversation came up here at this time, I would like input from you on whether or not, how you'd like to move forward, and so that the board has an opportunity to all have a weigh-in on that.
My thought is that most of our policies just say district. So if this one policy, if we're adding the word "school" and then the thought would be for consistency, I think it's a waste of time to go back through every single policy we have and add the word "school" before "district." We are a school district. It is implied that any policy that says "district" would mean "school district." So I think not having the word in this one new policy, rather than adding the word to every other policy, makes the most sense.
Thank you for your feedback. Is there any other commentation, conversation about this?
I just wanted to clarify that if we were to include, like, take into consideration the consistency of the term, "school district," that it would be "district", that it would be incorporated into our regular schedule of policy updates, not necessarily, we'd bring everything in front of the board in one night and change every single reference to "school", and every single reference to "district". But I agree with the not wanting to take a lot of time, but let's be consistent, but it's not a big deal because it means the same thing. My only feedback was perhaps considering capitalizing the district just to clarify that it is an official-term district. But again, this would be something that, once we decide however it's going to turn out, we would just, oh, I think, time to do it on this policy. Just some dotting eyes, if you will.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion?
I think I lean with Britt on just keeping it as "district", we're a school district, but we all know it's a district. 99% of our other policies say "district" already. And I feel pretty confident that everybody knows that we're referring to the "district". And so I think there's some legal terms that we, there's times where we need to refer to it as a corporation. But outside of those, I would be inclined to just leave it as "district", lowercase, just for the sake of, there's so many other documents across the district that we use "district" with a lowercase that if we put it into our policies with a capital, then what happens to all of the other things across the district that are lowercase "D" and uppercase "D"? I just feel like it adds a layer of complexity that might not be necessary. I understand the intent behind it, but I think it could just become one more thing that creates complexity.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, just for a recap, what we're, it is not about the implicat, is not about what is there. We all agree that district and school district have the same context or have the same outcome, but there is a consistency matter. So the question is, not so much how, whether or not to go back and get all the typos, which would you want, school district or district? So that we can either amend this motion, or we can leave it as is. We can agree that we will make those corrections as we move forward each time the policies are updated to make that change. But we need to know which change it is. And so we're just going to go, if you will kindly tell us, which one do you want? Do you want to call it "school district" or "district"? And believe it or not, this is time you have to make a decision. So, I mean, it's your preference. Go.
I see a third one. Leave as is.
Leave as is? Yep.
I would say personally, leave as is.
District, and adjust 801.6 to just say "district" in the motion.
I'm with Barry, leave as is, and then amend as we go forward.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, that was different.
District, switch to "district", lowercase, and keep all other policies the same.
Just leave it as is. I just want to.
Justin?
As a grammar nerd, it now would be the prime time to making a change to a new policy, just so that it could be reflective of the existing policies that we've had. So, that's my position.
So what do you, school district or district?
You know.
So your concern is the step backwards, that you just want it consistent? You're not invested?
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer. So if it doesn't make a difference, then whatever's easiest.
Can I, can then, I'm just going to go, what's your opinion then? I mean, just give me.
District.
There you go. Thank you. I say leave as is.
Okay, so there's four.
So, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the second reading of the policy recommendations as presented in Exhibit 701.7 with the removal of the word "school" before the word "district".
And having made the second, I'll second the second. Approve the change. Approve the amendment.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. We're going to go ahead, and with this amendment, let's go ahead. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? The amendment is in our minutes. Thank you very much. All right, there you go. So now we're back to the reading, second reading of the policy. We have an original motion by Melissa, a second by Laura. We need to approve that motion as well, correct? No? We did the amendment. We don't have to go back?
No, she amended it.
I know, you went to amend it, but don't you have to go back? Oh, my goodness.
That amends the original motion.
All right, we're good.
It's okay, I give you grace, Katie.
Thank you very much. That's our word for the day, is it not? All right, item number 800, new business.
I make a motion to approve the plans and specifications for Excelsior Middle School Roof Replacement Project as presented in Exhibit 801.1.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Madette. Is there any discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 802, approval of acceptance of gift.
I make a motion to approve the acceptance of Arifton R130 Trike for the Hazel Point Intermediate Special Education Program with the value of $3,265 gifted by Becky Lutkin Gardner per Linmar Policy 802.7 Gifts, Grants, and Bequests.
Second. And that was, Melissa, did you get that? Okay. We have a motion by Britt and a second by Melissa. Is there any conversation or discussion?
A huge thank you to Becky. I was going to say the same. Thank you so much.
Becky was my first boss when I moved to Cedar Rapids. And her and her family are amazing people, and this is very appreciated.
Thank you very much. We send our gratitude to Becky and her family for this gift. Is there no further discussion? Will, is all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item number 803, approval of student support associates' retention bonus.
Motion to approve the distribution of a one-time retention bonus of $500 to current and new student support associates who are employed by the district from March 3, 2025, through June 4, 2025, with payment reflected on their July 3, 2025 paycheck.
Second. We have a motion by Melissa, a second by Madette. Any discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, I go to you, vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Is that Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Barry, a second by Melissa. Any discussion?
Congratulations to Tony Nickel on their retirement.
Thank you for pointing that out to our congratulations. Is there any other discussion? At this time, if all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? All right. We are moving on to item number 902, approval of January 13 board minutes. No, wait, 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 wait. I had to go all the way down here, sorry. Board calendar, let's go ahead. And we have item number 1,000, Board Calendar and Communications. We have obviously an exciting day tomorrow. We will all be on the day at the Hill. And then also, we have going through February, we had many of the early dismissals and professional workdays mentioned by Amy. So I'm going to go through the other dates, please. February 3, Policy Committee. February 5, CTE. February 6 is Finance and Audit. February 6 is also Lynn County Conference Board. Thank you, Barry. We have February 6, Marion City Council. I have Madette going to that, thank you. February 10, we have the Board of Directors meeting and a work session. February 13, Board Visit to Westfield. February 17, DEI in the boardroom. February 20, Finance and Audit Committee. Also, February 20, I have Marion City Council with Laura going to that. February 24, at 5 o'clock, we have a board meeting again, along with our early dismissals. Is that all the meetings, and anything else we need to be aware of? All right.
Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn at 5:55.
Thank you, Britt. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Ah, and Laura got in the second. Thank you, Laura. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for your work this evening.